Thank you to each and every one of you for attending the LISD Council of PTAs Back the Future Candidate Forum tonight. My name is Michelle Alcatib. I am the President of the LISD Council of PTAs. Thank you Louisville ISD for allowing us to use their facilities and assisting us with the video recording of tonight's forum. As a reminder, LISD Council of PTAs, NOR Louisville ISD, is endorsing any candidate. There are over 506,000 PTA members in the state of Texas. This is over half a million strong. Louisville ISD Council of PTAs serves over 18,200 members throughout the 60 local units and districts, making our district over 3.5% of the current state membership. This candidate forum is a PTA Back the Future event for the LISD Council of PTAs. Back the Future is an event that brings together students, families, community members, and PTA leaders from all over LISD. Successful students are everyone's business, and successful schools build a successful community for all of us who call LISD home. LISD Council of PTAs hosts a Back the Future event a few times every school year. By us hosting this School Board Candidate Forum tonight, we are working together to back the future. It is my distinct pleasure to introduce Ms. Vrenell Gregg. Ms. Gregg has lived in the LISD community since 1981. She taught us as a language arts teacher in LISD for years before serving on the LISD Board of Trustees from 2006 to 2012. Ms. Gregg continues to be an active volunteer in numerous roles throughout the community. Please join me in welcoming Ms. Vrenell Gregg.
Thank you. Julie had asked for a bio. I said, "No, you don't need a bio. You just simply say, 'Ms. Gregg. I'm a professional volunteer, and I'm happy to be here. Thank you for having me.'" When she said two minutes, I said, "I can't. I have to write this because there's no way." So, bear with me. I want to thank you, the PTA, for hosting this event. This is very, very important because at this candidate forum, you give the community an active role in getting to meet the candidates as well as ask questions, allowing them to express their views and their concerns. As one of LISD's core beliefs says, "Education is the shared responsibility of the community," and I am happy to have PTA members, active and retired educators, students, and other members from our community here tonight taking an active role in backing the future. When I first heard your theme, I thought about what President Johnson said when he signed the First Elementary and Secondary Education Act in 1965. He said that full educational opportunity should be our first national goal. I was also reminded of the first line in Whitney Houston's song, "The Greatest Love." And that first line says, "I believe the children are our future. Teach them well and let them lead the way." This goes along with LISD's vision that says, "All of our students enjoy thriving, productive lives in a future that they create." This is where the importance of our school leaders and board members come in. One of the main goals, and I always say the most important one, of the School Board is to provide effective governance that promotes high student achievement with effective and efficient operation for the district. Board members are committed to being a voice for the entire community, and we always wanted parents to know that they can come to them at any time when they have a concern. Through workshops, conferences, and various meetings, they evaluate curriculum and programs to ensure students' success, and most importantly, student safety. They also work diligently to ensure that the resources are available when they're needed. Serving on the LISD Board of Trustees was one of my greatest honors, and I am extremely proud that I live in a district where, in spite of the tremendous growth, our district leaders and board members have kept our district as one of the leaders in the state in many things, as well in the nations and others. Thank you.
It is my honor to present our moderator for this forum, Ms. Julie Cluthy. Julie currently serves as the LISD Council of PTAs Executive Board as the Communications Chair. She has developed and leads our Rising Stars Academy. For the 2019-2020 school year, she will serve as the Fourth Vice President of Leadership Development for the Council of PTAs. Julie also serves as a member of the Texas PTA Leadership Committee. Fun fact about Julie: she is a former newspaper reporter who covered the education beat in Sioux City, Iowa. She enjoys attending School Board meetings and work sessions for fun. Please join me in welcoming Ms. Julie Cluthy.
Thank you, Michelle. Before we begin, a disclosure. Photos and videos are being taken tonight for use on our website and social media. Thank you to our photographer, Jackie Hernandez, a senior at Louisville High School. If for some reason you cannot be pictured, please let Jackie know right away and position yourself accordingly. Thank you also to LISD for your help in recording this event. We will make it available on our website and social media. Details at the end of the forum. The PTA has a mission: to make every child's potential a reality by engaging and empowering families and communities to advocate for all children. We are here for every child. We encourage family engagement in their children's education. We are in large part an advocacy organization, but we support or oppose issues, not candidates. We do encourage you to vote. About this forum, questions were solicited in advance of the meeting. Some of the questions used were submitted, and some are mine. I have made every effort to ensure that all questions are fair and factual, and any errors are mine. Three seats on the LISD Board of Trustees are up for election this year. Incumbents Angie Cox and Jenny Proznick are running unopposed for Places 3 and 5 respectively. Two candidates are running for Place 4, incumbent Catherine Sells and challenger Jake Collier. We are appreciative that all four candidates have agreed to participate, including in the uncontested races. We feel that it's important that voters do have the opportunity to get to know the people they're voting for. Of course, this is especially important where there is a decision to be made in a contested race. And with that in mind, we have decided to ask a few questions of all four candidates, and then we will focus on the contested race. Candidates will have two minutes for their opening and closing statements, and one minute to answer each question. Our timekeeper is Foster Young. He's a scout and an eighth grader at McCamey Middle School. He will hold up a yellow card when you have 10 seconds remaining, and a red card when your time is up. Finally, I'm asking the candidates to please remain seated when responding in order to ensure clear audio. At this time, each candidate now has two minutes to give an opening statement. The order was determined by a coin flip, and Mrs. Sells will begin.
Thank you all for coming out tonight, and thank the Council for having this forum. This is multiple forum, the time that I've attended this forum, and my second time as a candidate, and it's appreciated that we get our views out. But my leadership for this position began long before I was elected as a trustee. I've served in multiple committees and organizations in a leadership role, serving the families, students, staff, and taxpayers of LISD. I was the first elected to the LISD Board of Trustees in 2016, and just that next year, I was elected as Secretary of the Board, where I still serve. I believe that with the issues facing our school district, it's more important than ever to elect candidates that are familiar with the inner workings of LISD, as I am, not just newcomers to our community and to our district. I have been a parent in the district also for 16 years, and have spent that time educating myself on the process, the policies and procedures important to student success and to my own children, having walked through with them in ARDS, through special education, through their successes and through their failures. I would appreciate your support on May the 4th. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Collier?
Thank you for coming here, everybody. I appreciate everybody being here and being engaged in some of the issues that we have in the community, because it's very important, especially due to the low voter turnout. I am somebody that has lived in the community for about three years. As soon as I moved to Louisville three years ago to start my landscaping company, Collier Landscaping, I immediately started serving in the community. Now, I am young. I'm 26 years old, but I do have business background. I've been doing business for years. I work for a financial services company where we provide services to people to help them get out of debt, become financially free, and to protect their wealth. So, I have plenty of experience in the business and the financial world, and as somebody who's been serving in youth ministry for six, seven years, I've really been able to gauge some of the issues in our school system, some of the mental health issues. The mind of our students is the foundation of our education system. And with the mental aspect of some of the students that I've served and seen, that's one of the reasons why I've decided to run. My name's Jake Collier.
Thank you. Ms. Proznick?
Good evening. Thank you first to the Louisville Council of PTAs for hosting this event. I appreciate those here tonight on becoming an informed voter. I believe that public schools are the cornerstone to the community, and learning about those who are asking to lead is very important. I would encourage everyone here not only to vote, but to find a friend in Denton County and early vote on Tuesday, a polling location of your choice. The most asked question of any candidate is, "Why are you running?" I was first elected to the Louisville ISD School Board in Place 5 in May of 2016. My reasons for running then are similar to today. I understand the value of a strong quality school system brings to the community. I want to keep LISD strong, but also continue to make it better so it's a shining light in each one of those communities. My children are why I became involved in LISD, and the over 52,000 students are why I stay. Their future matters to me, and we only get one chance to get it right. For each and every one of them, I take that responsibility very seriously. I want as much for their futures as for my own children. Because the education provided today in this world is the world we will live in. Your greatest emotional investment is your children, and your greatest financial investment is your home, and both are affected by the ISD in which they reside. And as a parent and a taxpayer, you deserve a great return on both. I, along with my fellow board members, have been a part of several initiatives the past three years, and I want to see those initiatives through. I am humbled and grateful that I did not receive an opponent, and look forward to serving the taxpayers, students, and teachers of LISD for the next three years with the same passion and commitment to excellence that I have in the past three. Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you. And Mrs. Cox?
Good evening, and my name is... Oh, good evening. And thank you again to the Council of PTAs for providing this forum. My name is Angie Cox. I am a mom, mother of four. I am a business owner here in town. I also work at a company here in town as well. And I am humbled as well to be able to not draw an opponent, but I wanted to tell you, I don't take that lightly. I'm happy to serve for the past six years, being in LISD, to serve the kids, all 53,000 students in this district. We have worked really hard as a board, and I'm very proud of the work we've done, and there's a lot of work that we have to do. My initiatives that I'm going to be looking for is safety, transparency, and of course, student achievement. And I'm very proud of our district that we have a 97% graduation rate. Our district is doing amazing things, and we have a lot of amazing things coming up, and I want to continue that mission. But I also want to hear from you as well. I've left my cards over there, and so I'm happy to meet with you anytime. I volunteer at Hedrick Elementary. I serve in the Leadership in Me program. I also mentor a student there, and I work with communities and schools, and I work with PD Play. Those are some of our partners that we have in our district that work with our schools. So, I want to be involved and active in our community and see what your kids are doing, and be an advocate for you as parents and an advocate for our kids. So, thank you very much for coming tonight to meet the candidates.
Thank you. All four candidates will answer this series of questions. Timekeeper, they now have one minute per response. This is a PTA forum, and so we do have a couple of PTA questions for you. First of all, please describe your PTA involvement. We'll begin with Mrs. Cox.
Well, I've been involved in the PTA since my oldest son is 23, so since we've been in kindergarten, I guess. I have served on various committees. I've never served on the Board, but I have served on various committees. I think I've brought in lots of cookies to the school and lots of other things. But I can tell you, I appreciate the PTA so much, especially now serving on the Board. We need them, and they are such a partner with the district. I can't tell you how much... I know it's a lot of involvement and stuff that they do, but behind the scenes, just providing programs and other things that the district can't provide, and you know, seeing things that they're doing on campuses, providing canapes for things that the school district can't, you know, afford or do extra, very appreciative of the hard work of PTA. So, I continue my involvement, and I am a member of the PTA as well.
Mrs. Sells?
Well, first of all, I started 16 years ago and have served in every imaginable office at a local level, and it culminated with me being President of this council, which I'm very, very honored to have done. From there, I was elected to the Board, but I continue to serve at the Texas PTA level as Field Service Rep. I serve two of our adjoining districts in allowing them advocacy, training, and just a financial piece that they may be missing at some of their locals, and I just do an advisement for them. I've also spoken at the National PTA Conference and the Launch Conference here. More importantly, I am a member of every PTA in LISD. And the reason why I do that is because I have this card. I've never shown this card, but I've often mentioned it. My dad was a high school dropout, and this is his PTA card from 1973. I keep it in my nightstand as a reminder that those are the students that I want to serve.
Thank you. Mr. Collier?
I'm not a parent, but I have actually made efforts with the Timber Creek, some of the Timber Creek PTA and the Lamar Middle School PTA. I have reached out. I did apply to the Lamar Middle School because we have quite a bit of students that do go to Lamar. So, as a non-parent, it is a little bit difficult. As a non-teacher, it is a little bit difficult. But I will say that I have made those efforts, and I'll continue to, because I think it's important to work with other groups that can take over some of the burdens that tax dollars simply can't fix. And to kind of piggyback off of what Angie said, you know, if we're working with organizations who can help us field some of the other issues in the district, then I'm all for that. So, yes, I'll absolutely continue to build my relationship and strengthen it with you guys. Absolutely.
Thank you. And Mrs. Proznick?
Well, very much like Ms. Cox, mine began way back, long time ago. I served on the Hicks PTA Board, the Arbor Creek Middle School PTA Board, and on the Hebron PTA, where I was fortunate enough to be President there for two years. I've been a treasurer. I've been a membership chair. I've done it all. But the gig to get is staff appreciation. You are loved beyond measure when you do that at a school, and it is... I did that at Arbor Creek, and that was a great deal of fun. I have certainly gone down to PTA, down to Austin, worn my colored PTA shirt, and advocated to our state legislatures on more than one occasion. PTA is so important because there is nothing that is more effective to a student's achievement than a caring adult, and that is what PTA can provide.
Thank you. We'll begin with Ms. Sells for this question. Texas PTA asks us to back the future of every child. How do you back the future of all students in our large and diverse school district?
Well, I make sure that my decisions as a School Board member touch every child. And I think that the best way I can explain a lot of my decisions, and it's something that a lot of people don't know, is that I was actually a student in the last branch of Brown versus the Board of Education. I was a student during Cisneros versus Corpus Christi Independent School District, where investing still took place through the 1970s. And that was instrumental in me making sure that no child, not dependent on their religion, their race, their gender, their socioeconomic background, ever was denied the full potential of an education as we are required by law to give. And we do that in LISD very well. We do that by writing our own curriculum. We do that by providing professional training so that all of our teachers are equipped to go into the classroom. And we do that also by just supporting through our Assistant Chiefs of Schools, and they are responsible for all the schools at a level across the district.
Thank you. Mr. Collier?
So, I... A big thing to me, because I am so involved in youth ministry, it is a little bit more difficult to justify using Christian services within public education just because of the separation of church and state. But in my time outside of, you know, working with my church, I have come across several organizations who actually can fit individual needs. The needs of our student are individual. The future is their career. Once they get out of high school, they have a career choice. So, if we're working with other organizations, working with other companies to continue to build resources and outreach as well as career-minded approaches to some of the things, I think that we can swing getting the future in all of those things. I mean, we have a lot of issues to tackle within the minds of our students as well as the future careers of them. So, I think hitting those two things especially is going to be one of the best, most significant ways that we can back their future.
Mrs. Proznick?
I think you back the future by backing students. I try to focus every single one of my decisions as a student-focused decision. How will this affect student achievement? Does this move the district forward? Does this make us stand in concrete, or are we constantly getting better? That's how you back the future. You back the future by giving a foundation for students to make choices and to do better.
Mrs. Cox? It's kind of a loaded question, to be honest, because we are a very diverse district, and we have students all over the spectrum with needs. And when I base my decisions, I ask questions of parents. I ask questions of teachers. And I don't come and base my decisions on what Angie Cox thinks personally. It's based on what you think too, as a community, and what's best for our students, no matter what the situation is. So, I'm blessed that we have a district, as Ms. Sells mentioned, that we develop our own curriculum, but that we also provide our students with opportunities. Our students are faced with so many things, not just, you know, curriculum that they do, but home life, things that they might have going on. And we're providing services for them with our new counseling system, our safety and security that we're providing in all of our high schools. We are so blessed to have a district that is looking out for our students in their best interest, and that's how we back the future and continue our 97% graduation rate. Because I can't tell you, nothing excites me more than watching those kids walk across that stage and knowing that they have a golden ticket to whatever they're going to do, whether it be a career... Oh, I'm already done. I'm happy about it.
For the next question, we'll begin with Mr. Collier. We are moving on to LISD Strategic Design, which is summed up on the wall behind you. What does real innovation and limitless opportunity mean to you, and how do you balance these goals with financial realities?
So, I think real innovation, I think we could go with... I think we can put technology and career in some of those things, because we have so many technological advancements and access to technology that we continue to guide to the district and that continues to give us the opportunity. And so, even within that, some of the programs and some of the companies that we can work with, they can also help us provide some of those limited opportunities. I mean, it's expensive to open another career center. It's very expensive. And if we're working with other companies and they're providing the opportunity, then we're saving money. I mean, we have to look at those other resources of working with companies, because it's expensive to continue to build what we want to build, because we have such high caliber students that they're almost outpacing what our tax dollars can cover for them, so...
Mrs. Proznick?
Real limit of innovation and limitless opportunity are basically the opportunities I feel that we provide in the district through our programs. There are avid programs that we have at some of our middle schools and our high schools. The opportunities that are STEM Academy at our elementaries. We've made a commitment now to have an elementary STEM Academy in every single one of our feeder patterns, and we'll be looking to open one of our middle schools in a few years, once it's identified. Those are the opportunities that we can provide students, and then we can provide to all... make available to all students in the district. But the real innovation is the curriculum that we write. We write our own curriculum. So, every student in the district has the same opportunity with the same education. That is, I believe, some innovation. We're always growing. Always. We're always looking for a way to do it better. It's the best part about education and the worst part. You never get to the goal because the goal is always moving.
Mrs. Cox?
I think, you know, it goes with limitless opportunities, but also keeping the financial reality. So, being in check with what we were providing, making sure we're doing our fiduciary responsibility to make sure the things that we are providing are responsible to our taxpayers. But I'm very excited that we have in our district, we do have limitless opportunities, not only through our STEM Academy, but our Discover Academy that we're now providing for pre-K, that we're able to actually get pre-K in there, and teachers are actually getting to see what the needs of students are as they're entering their kindergarten class. We're also providing students opportunities through the Ag program, the sports programs. We want to get our kids active and involved. The new career center that you're going to see over on 3040 is going to be absolutely amazing to provide all of our students opportunities for the food program, a floral program, and the restaurant is going to be over there. I cannot wait for you guys to all see that. So, I'm excited that we have opportunities for our kids, no matter what.
Mrs. Sells?
Well, for me, when I see real innovation, I think that you're not afraid to change. And I think that this Board has shown that in the last three years. I ran on wanting to open up more opportunities for our kids and those limitless opportunities. We didn't have any academies, and I had done some work with the Irma Rangel School for Girls in Dallas and had seen the opportunities that the academies and the STEM-based learning could do. And so, I want to say that there's no change, and there's no ceiling. It's limitless. And that is the opportunity part, is that these kids can design their future. And we, as trustees, need to make sure that we give them every opportunity. And one of the ways that I did that this week in balancing these goals with financial realities is I actually was able to make the connection with a partnership with an engineering firm in our district. And they were able to provide a STEM kit and a financial donation to one of our middle schools. And so, I think as a trustee, sometimes you need to not say that you're going to do things, but just go do them. And that is something that I did this week, and it provides an opportunity for those students that they would not have had before.
Mrs. Proznick will answer the next question first. What do you see as the Board of Trustees' primary roles and responsibilities?
Well, our primary role is hiring the superintendent and approving the budget. That's the boring framework. But I think what we are in the district, what we provide is... The best way I can describe it is we look at Dr. Rogers, and we say, "We want to go climb that mountain." Dr. Rogers figures out how we're going to climb that mountain, whatever that mountain is that we decide as a Board we want to climb, whether that be student achievement, whether that be a financial goal, whatever that goal is. That's what we are. We're the why. Dr. Rogers is the how.
Mrs. Cox? So, as Ms. Proznick said, yes, our primary role is Dr. Rogers hiring the superintendent and setting the budget. But I see ourselves as the eyes and ears of the district. We are an avenue. Every single one of our Board members is very transparent and approachable, and that's what I'd like to think of myself as, as an approachable Board member. Anytime that you have a problem or a situation, I would want to get a phone call or you reach out to me because we advocate for you, and we want to pass that message on to our superintendent so that if there's a situation or something positive going on, that we pass that message... So, that if there's a situation or something positive going on, that we pass that message on, you know, Dr. Rogers can't be everywhere all the time in the district. So, we are those eyes and ears to help advocate for you and the students of the district as well.
Ms. Sells?
Yes. Well, legally, there are four things that we are responsible for, and those are the financials, the facilities, the curriculum, and the policies. And in that policy, of course, is the hiring and firing of the superintendent. I think that this district has gone beyond that. And sometimes, our community can't engage with us on what really we are responsible for. No, I can't get your student moved to a new classroom, you know? So, and that sometimes is things that we're asked. But, so what we did, I think, is using our four cornerstones for our community to really know what our responsibilities are. And so, in those four cornerstones, our student experience, our student achievement, our community engagement, our financial stewardship, and those all should culminate into what our real responsibility is, and that is our student outcomes. We are here for education and for educating our children. And so, in that middle of our four cornerstones is future-ready. And so, I love that the fact that it's not necessarily college-ready, it can be career or college-ready. And so, I love that we have made that available for our community.
Thank you. And Mr. Collier?
So, I think everybody pretty much had the right answer, and I would agree with everything that everybody else said. But I do believe that the primary role is to hire and fire the superintendent. And to me, and especially knowing some of the other trustees, one of the biggest things that we do is represent the community. And I think every one of them has done really well. I've gotten to know some of them. And I've seen a lot of the things that they've done just by representing what we do in our district. And so, on top of that, being a voice, that's a big deal to me, because we have to have somebody who's talking to legislators, who's being bold, who's not afraid to go to Austin. And, I mean, that's a big deal to me, because those things, we don't get paid for those things. Those are independent, selfless things that we do. Those are our primary roles of the board, is to be selfless, essentially. And so, I look at that as one of the biggest factors that we have, is to be selfless and are serving the community.
Thank you. Mrs. Cox? What is the most pressing issue facing LISD, and how would you address it?
It's a loaded question. I think probably the most pressing issue is the diverse district that we have, and making sure that we are providing a quality education for all of our students. And I commend, as it was comments were made earlier, that we do develop our own curriculum. And it's really great that we have parent involvement, teacher involvement, that we really look at the curriculum and what's best for all of our students in all of our levels, from our special ed to our gifted and talented to our middle students, that we are making sure every student is provided a quality education.
Ms. Sells?
Well, I think that one of the most pressing issues right now is our school finance. And so, I think that if you follow our school finance, you know that the district could be broken three to four years if something is not changed. And so, for me, it's hard to move forward if you are not going to have the financial means to do so. And so, for me, it is the financial piece of school finance, because like Ms. Cox said, we do want to continue to provide that, the education for all of our students. We have 30% of our kiddos are on free and reduced lunch, and that shocks a lot of our people in certain areas of our district. They don't understand that we really, truly need funding to help support those things, to provide the Avid programs, to continue to partner with communities and schools of North Texas to provide those mentors, which I am one of. I followed my, my little girl from fourth grade, and she's now at Delay Middle School. And I've committed to her till she graduates, and we're already forming some college plans and things. So, that would be my answer.
Mr. Collier?
To me, the biggest issue that LISD is facing is mental health. I do work closely with our students. It's regular, it's daily. I've seen so many of the issues that they're facing, whether it be at school, whether it be at home. And I've said it already, the mind is the foundation of our education system. And I'll be honest with you, a lot of their minds are in bad shape. And I speak from that, from, not just from my heart, but as a fact. I mean, we go, I serve at a great church, but there are students who come from terrible home lives. And that's something that the district, we can't, you know, prevent some of those things, but we can work with other organizations who actually see some of those needs. We have great professional counseling. Jill Adams is incredible. I don't think she's here, but she's awesome. You know, we have connections and communications that we can make and partner with those other groups, and that's how I'm going to address it. I'm going to save some money, and we're going to work with some other organizations, for sure.
Mrs. Proznik?
I would agree with Ms. Sells. I think that, and I would expand on that, just say the whole legislative session is really what's most pressing. It's very, right now, we've had, we've had one budget meeting, and we will have a second one in May. I encourage you to come. But we're making plans without having any structure, because we don't know what bills are going to be passed and how it's going to affect us, and what is what recapture is going to look like, which is a part of our budget. It was $30 million part of our budget this year. So, I would say that the legislature and waiting for Senai Day, which is at the end of May, to know exactly what that is. So, in some ways, the most pressing issue is not knowing what it is we're going to be facing at the end of May. The other thing that I would say is pressing is what we face every day, meeting students where we find them, and making sure that where we find them, we move them, and we move them along in a positive direction towards, in their education.
Ms. Sells? Since August 1st, 2018, there have been 40 public Board of Trustees' meetings, including nine regular meetings, 14 special meetings. Many of those were dealing with proposed boundary adjustments, eight workshops, and nine work sessions. How many of these meetings did you attend? And which agenda item was the most interesting to you? And which was the most important?
Wow. I have to think, I have to think about the agenda items.
Yeah.
Because, of course, we had a school board meeting on Monday night, and there was some things. And so, that's what's pressing, because that's what's in it. I've attended all 40 public meetings. I've even attended all, I believe we had seven of our boundary meetings. I think I was the only trustee that attended all seven of those meetings. It's at a sacrifice to my family sometimes, to me financially. We don't get paid for mileage, we don't get paid for some of the things that we do, but I have attended all 40. The agenda item that was the most interesting to you, I think, was the presentation on our new Discovery Academies. I think to be offered, to being able to offer that to our pre-K is amazing. It's going to, it's going to change some of their lives. When we're looking at the research of the pre-K academies and/or just providing that curriculum to that age student, how that can change them moving forward. When they come to kindergarten, if they're ready to learn, their learning can be even expanded more so than, than any. What agenda item was the most? And I see my 10, my 10 seconds. Which agenda item was most important? I think that sometimes hearing from, hearing our budget is, is what's most important to me.
Thank you. Mr. Collier? That's a multi-part, I'm sorry, that was a multi-question question, and so, I'll allow you just a little bit of extra time, if you would like it also.
Okay, okay, thank you. So, I don't know, that's, like Angie said, it's a very, very loaded question. Most interesting, it's kind of hard for me to say, because I think the most interesting to me was also the most important for, like, this next year, is that we have actually voted to declare 11 properties as surplus properties. We have a lot of decisions to be made this year, as far as what we're going to do with some of those properties. I mean, let's look at some of the options that we have, whether we're going to build revenue through selling some of those properties, whether we're going to do teardowns and, you know, maybe build a trade school, maybe work with other companies that we can partner with to have internships. I see that, to me, after that meeting, I thought that that was probably one of the more interesting things, that if I am elected, that I'll be able to vote on, and, I mean, we'll be able to see how much revenue we can generate and how much we can do for our kids by utilizing those resources.
Thank you. Would you like to also answer the, the first question about how many meetings you've attended?
Oh, oh, sorry, I didn't see that one. I, I don't, I don't know a specific number. It, probably half, it's probably half.
Thank you. Ms. Proznik?
I've attended 39 of the last public meetings. I missed one of the public meetings, because my little mentee at Griffin had a concert, and so, I went to her concert. Which agenda was most interesting to me? There are a lot, but the, the one that comes, there are two that come to mind, and that was actually one of the ones more recently, on the middle school STEM Academy, how we're going about looking at that and the processes for that. And our Avid meeting. I'm a big proponent of Avid. I think that Avid is an excellent program, and how we are going to implement it in the district. Those were the two that were the most interesting to me. And the most important was actually fairly recently, which was adopting the materials for K through 8. I was one of the few trustees that went over to the building next door and played with the materials and looked at them, and talked to our teachers about it. The curriculum is the most important thing that we do, because that's how our kids learn.
Ms. Cox?
So, of the 40 public meetings, I've attended all 40. I have made a commitment as a trustee, when elected by you, I take my job very seriously, and I don't miss meetings. I attend as many meetings as I can, and I try to be at as many schools as I can to see what's going on district-wide. We have 53,000 students and over 70 campuses, and I want to make sure I'm getting to know what our campuses are doing in all spectrums of our district. What agenda item is most interesting to you is passing our bond. It's very exciting to see all the opportunities. You talk about limitless opportunities, to see what's going to happen in our district with our school refreshes, our STEM Academy, safety and security. I'm so excited that we're going to be hardening our front entrances for our schools to keep, protect our children and keep them safe. It's very important to me and one of my initiatives. What agenda item is most important? As was said earlier, it's, it's our finances. We can't do these things if we, if we don't have the finances to do it. So, I, I'm looking forward to seeing what the legislative is going to pass and what our budget is going to look like, because as Ms. Sells related to earlier, it is kind of scary times for our district, because we want to make sure, we don't want to get rid of programs or things that our kids have opportunities for, and that's what I will fight for our kids, to continue to have opportunities for our district.
Thank you. And at this time, I would like to thank Ms. Cox, Mrs. Cox and Mrs. Proznik for your participation in this forum. Do you, do you have any final words before we focus on the contestants?
The only thing I would say is that if you have a concern or anything to reach out, I have a motto, I say it every time I visit a campus or I meet with a parent, which is, "I can't do better if I don't know better." So, if you don't tell me, I don't know.
I just want to thank you for coming out. And again, as I said earlier, I am transparent. I have a website, Facebook, but most importantly, I have a cell phone. So, I'm able to meet with you and, and call me anytime. I'm happy to get back with you, and I'd love to sit down. And I just want to thank, I love seeing our students active. You are a great timekeeper, and not only your Boy Scout and great photography that you've done. So, I love that our students come out and are active and involved. So, thank you to you, and thank you to everyone that came out tonight.
Thank you. And if the two of you would prefer to sit in the audience at this point, you certainly may.
Can I take my water?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'll pay for it.
Yeah, I'm taking my water.
And if anyone does have any further questions for Mrs. Cox or Mrs. Proznik, you can find their contact information in our Voter Resource Guide, which is on our website and social media. We'll begin the next question with Mr. Collier. What differentiates you from your opponent?
Well, I've, I've answered this question before with leadership. I think that my leadership is unique in the sense of what I've experienced as a 26-year-old. The opportunities that I've been given in my life has equipped my leadership, not just for this role, but for the generations to come. Without being conceited, I know that there is impact that I can make in our community and that I'll continue to make, to spur on new leadership, to provide examples, and that's something that I have done differently. I know for sure that the individual outreach and the individual connections that my students have been given from me is not something that anybody else has given them, and I know that for a fact, and I'm proud of that, because that does differentiate my leadership. That does give, the, the fact that I don't have kids of my own, that I have the freedom to improvise with my life, has given me the opportunity to take some of those opportunities, to spend time with my students that I wouldn't have had if I did have children of my own.
Thank you. Ms. Sells?
Well, I think just the fact that, that I became involved in the district long before I ever started telling people in the community that I was going to run for school board. I think the fact that I had before that 13 years of experience with no intent of running for the school board, that I was supporting our locals, I was volunteering in our schools, I was mentoring students in other campuses than my own children, I was working with our youth. I've worked with children and our youth for over 20 years in where I worship. And so, I think that my experience, I have an MBA. I not only started college, but I also finished it twice. I got a DVA, and I got an MBA. I also went back and studied education. I actually did student teaching and did an internship in that. And so, I think that my experience is, is the biggest thing.
Thank you. Ms. Sells? The LISD budget this fiscal year includes revenues and expenditures of nearly $500 million in the general fund, and roughly $24 million in the food service fund, and $140 million in the debt service fund. What are your qualifications to provide oversight of a budget with revenues and expenditures of more than $650 million?
Well, referring back to my answer in the first question, I did attend college, I did get an MBA that was an extensive MBA. I went from my MBA to work for the city of Dallas. I worked on several large projects for the city of Dallas. I worked on the US 75 expansion from Loop 12 all the way down to Haskell. We were in charge of relocating everybody that was affected by that expansion, and there were numerous. And we included students from SMU, we included businesses, and we included some housing projects that were actually still in existence at that time. That budget was quite large. And so, it was not 650 million, but it was in the tens of millions. My other large project was the expansion of the Dallas Zoo. If you look at the Safari area, that was our expansion. Actually, in order to be able to justify that to the city council, I actually went in and worked for a week in a rubber manufacturing facility, because I wanted to explain to our city council why we were needing those millions of dollars.
Thank you. Mr. Collier?
So, I, I, whenever I went to college, I studied political science and history. I do not have a fancy degree or two degrees, but I have worked and had my own small business company for years. And even before that, I was always working. I've always been an entrepreneur, but currently, I actually work for the largest financial services company in the nation. So, within that, I mean, we handle millions of dollars. I don't directly, because I'm not always on top of investments, but within that, we manage millions of dollars within different portfolios of helping people protect their wealth through insurance, through other products like that that can help sustain their financial security. So, no, I haven't, I haven't done a budget for a massive conglomerate, but I have helped families with plenty of their budgets, at least 50 families with planning budgets, ways to get out of debt, you know, debt stacking programs, things like that, stuff that Dave Ramsey teaches. We teach a lot of the things to different families, and that's a big deal to me. I think that has given me a lot of understanding in how to provide oversight with our budget and how we spend some of these things.
Thank you. Mr. Collier? What is your analysis on what is happening so far this legislative session regarding school finance and the impact it may have on LISD?
Well, there, there are so many, there are so many factors within it. Recently, Governor Abbott, I don't, I don't understand it. He wants, they want to add the 1% sales tax and keep the 2.5% property tax. Now, I looked at his proposal, and if we, I love Governor Abbott, I worked for him on his campaign, but if we're going to allow decisions like that, which in his, in his proposal, all it talks about is property taxes. It says nothing about the impact of the sales tax increase. And that's going to affect everybody, that everybody that isn't a homeowner is going to see that sales tax. And that's going to affect everybody. Everybody that isn't a homeowner is going to see that sales tax, sales tax increase affect what they're spending their dollars on. And, I mean, I could go back and forth to recapture in Robin Hood. Those are, to me, it's criminal. I mean, we cannot continue to allow our education to be socialized. That's terrible. It doesn't work and we can fix it.
Mrs. Sells?
Well, I think that my analysis so far is that we really need to continue to watch the HB3. I think that's really the bill that is impacting on the school finance. It also affects our property tax. It will, it will reduce that recapture. It will increase the allotment of our, that we have received for our students. It'll go from, I believe it's fifty-one forty to sixty thirty. I always get the forty and the thirty mixed up, but I believe that that is what it is. It will increase dyslexic funding and so that would be a great need. And we're only one of seven states that doesn't have that. And it's a need that we're seeing. A lot of our students have. And so, that, and then it would increase our pre-K. Now, would it be enough? I don't think so, but it would increase our pre-K. And so, I think that if they continue on and we see great progress in that HB3, I think that it would be, we as a school district would be in a better financial place.
Thank you. Mrs. Sells? What would you like LISD taxpayers to understand about the current school finance system, including recapture?
Well, the certain school finance system, I think, can be summed up in one word and it's antiquated. It's not a hundred years old, but it hasn't really changed for a very long time. And so, we cannot, and what I love about LISD and a lot of our school districts in Texas is that we have continued to do more with less. But now, we're at the point that we cannot do more with less. And so, we really need the legislators and our lawmakers in Austin to really hear our voice and to provide that additional funding. And as far as recapture, I don't think it works. It's broken. It's a broken system. If you go back to where it originated, it's no longer helping those few. If you look at the maps, you see where the few school districts were that it really helps. And now, we've become that it's helping all. It's just incredible the amount, the number of ISDs is helping. And that was not its intent and we need to go back and review that and come back to a better understanding.
Mr. Collier?
I agree. It is antiquated. You know, like I just said, we need to be as far away from socialized education as possible. It doesn't work. The performance doesn't change how the other schools perform. I mean, it's like Catherine just said, if you, if you look at the numbers, it is not working. And if we continue to allow our legislators to run this course and continue to play with our money, then it's going to be bad for our school district. It's going to be hard for us to continue to build the successful programs that we have been building. And one of the things that I've been telling some of my students is, what do you think about socialism? Do you know what socialism is? Well, what do you think about how our school system works? And they don't like that recapture in Robin Hood is the way that it is. They don't think it's fair. And if they're at that age and they're going to be leading the next generation, then we need to continue to inspire them, inspire the community to speak up and say something about it.
Thank you. Next question is for Mr. Collier. Louisville ISD is in the second year of its District of Innovation Plan, which includes exemptions from five requirements of the Texas Education Code. The five-year plan can be amended through an annual review process. My question for you is, how satisfied are you with our District of Innovation Plan?
A hundred percent. I think it's great. I think what we've done for the district is huge. I mean, you know, if you look at some of the technological advances that we've been given just even through this program, it's huge. The students have felt almost every single impact of it and I'll continue to advocate and sustain it over the next three years if I am elected.
Mrs. Sells?
Well, I was for the District of Innovation Plan. I think that the greatest thing that it has done for us is gives us flexibility in our school calendar. And so, that has been our greatest asset. We, I believe that I have seen an impact in my own students and my own children when they, my daughter, when she's able to finish the semester before the holiday break and then begin again a new semester afterwards. And so, I think that that part, I'm extremely satisfied. I'm also satisfied with the fact that some of the things that we thought might be a hindrance or be a negative has not occurred. And I think that's because we made a stand as our board that some of those things that the teachers maybe were concerned with, the certifications, that we are not allowed. And so, I am right now satisfied.
Thank you. Mrs. Sells? As an advocate for Louisville ISD, what is your approach when it comes to influencing Texas lawmakers?
Well, I think my greatest approach technique is respect. I think that we cannot come to the table with them without it. Doesn't matter what their, what their party is or what their thinking is. We need to come to the table prepared, with information and with respect. And the other thing we need to come to is not always just complaining, but also come to them with a solution. And that was very impactful when we sat outside one, the, one of their offices one day and he said, "I understand, but what are we going to do? What can we do?" And so, I think that when we're approaching them, we need to make sure that we're prepared, we have our information in order and that we're willing to listen also to them, but also come, be willing to come up with a joint solution.
Mr. Collier?
Boldness. I think that we have to be speaking to our lawmakers very bold. They have to understand the situation that our students are facing. They have to understand some of the needs of the district. One of the very first things that I did once I declared, well, it wasn't the very first thing, but it was pretty close to one of the first things, was set up a meeting with Senator Nelson's office. I met with one of her aides and, you know, got to get on the same page about if I was elected, you know, how we would communicate with each other, what channels I could operate through. And I'm going to do it. I mean, if I'm elected, that's going to, that's going to be one of the biggest things that I think that I can do as far as being a voice to these lawmakers because they don't know what's going on in our district unless we're telling them. Unless we're getting in front of them and saying, "Hey, this is what's happening." You know, we can sit back. That's great. That's a great thing if you want to sit back. I have no problem with that. But I'm the type of person that if I see a problem and I know that somebody's there that can fix it and I can reach out to that person, I'm going to do it.
Mr. Collier? Louisville ISD and Texas PTA both address school safety and our legislative priorities. How satisfied are you with LISD's approach to school safety?
I wouldn't say that I'm disappointed. I mean, I am, I am content. I think that we have great law enforcement in our, in our community. We have great security resources. I mean, it's unmatched compared to some of the other districts. So, as far as the staff and the people that we have, completely satisfied, completely. I mean, we have great partnerships with our law enforcement that no other district has. I mean, Highland Village, the law enforcement there has a unique relationship with the schools in the sense that maybe it is because it's a smaller area. I don't know. But one of the big things that I've seen is that some of these, some of these organizations, like our security stuff, our district, our schools, our law enforcement, don't have a super-structured web of communication. There is communication and they have to, you know, but there isn't something in place that we can cut across the board to say, "Hey, this person speaks to this person this way." It isn't like that. It's typically based on who's in what geographical area at which point. And that's great, but we can improve it if we strengthen our communication and that's going to be very simple.
Mrs. Sells?
Well, I think that, that I am satisfied and one of the reasons I am satisfied is that our Director of Safety and Security, he brought on an A1 team. And so, through that, they have the Safety and Security Task Force, which all of our law enforcement is a member of. And the thing that I think that is hard for our community to understand is that you're not always putting out all of your safety procedures and all of your security procedures because you don't want the bad guys to know. But I spoke with our director and he assured me that we not only have one of the finest communication methods for, with all of our law enforcements, but that we're continually increasing those and we're continually working to make them even better. And so, I am satisfied with our school safety, especially with our twenty-eight million that we had in our bond and we're enforcing our entrances to our schools. We're assessing when we're building new schools, where safety class used, where is brick being used. So, I'm satisfied.
Mrs. Sells? Trustees are sometimes called upon by their constituents to explain things that are going on in the school district. In that spirit, in as much, in as much detail as possible in a minute, please describe a program that you like at any LISD Title I school.
Just one. Well, I think that a program, and I'm going to be more general about this, but that is offered at our, some of our Title I schools and some of them, they are not. And, but we are going to be offering those at some of those others, is our partnership with our communities and schools of North Texas. And I think that one of the programs that we have at that, at one of our Title I schools is the Dress to Learn Closet and that's a partnership with the PTA. And so, we're here on the PTA and so that's the first thing that popped up to my mind. Is that really a program? I'm not sure if that's what you're asking, but it's something that's near and dear to my heart because we provide through that Dress to Learn Closet and the PTA, the Council of PTAs provides a student the necessary things to be ready to learn when they walk into that classroom. And that is one of those things that I think is most impactful to a student, to know that they're not different from anybody else when they walk into that classroom, that they have a backpack, they have socks, they have shoes.
Mr. Collier?
I would say Volley. I have worked with Volley. I think that it's great. That it gives everybody an opportunity to kind of plug into each school. And I've taken that opportunity myself. There are other areas, you know, that we can strengthen as far as communicating with parents about some of those things, but other than that, that's definitely one of my favorite things.
Mr. Collier? How much time do you estimate it will require to be a successful trustee? And how much time do you have to devote to the position?
A million. I would, I would assume, I've heard twenty, but I would assume forty to sixty. And I'm willing to make those sacrifices. You know, people that work for me, they know what workload they're about to have if I get elected. They're well aware because they know how committed I am to this district and to this position. So, I mean, this is going to be number one if I'm elected.
Mrs. Sells?
Well, it does take some weeks, twenty to forty hours a week. And I devote as much time as needed. I don't miss meetings. I don't miss the board meetings prior to the election. I don't miss any of our community member meetings without, I've only missed two meetings. One, I had already scheduled when I got elected to be overseas and the other was I missed a meeting when my father died. And those are the only two meetings I've missed in three years. So, I have all the time there is to devote to this position.
Thank you. At this time, we're ready for our closing statements and Mrs. Sells will begin. They will have two minutes for the closing statement.
I think that this is just a pivotal time for LISD with everything that's going on. I think you've seen through my answers tonight that I've worked in public and private sectors with large budgets, leading teams and projects, and I've delivered successful outcomes, not just put on a piece of paper that I had experience. There's one thing to have experience. There's another thing to be successful in those experiences. I believe that my education, community, finance and business experience has been vital in the implementation of efficient and effective programs and policies during my term on the board. I've been invested in LISD as a homeowner, a taxpayer, a parent, and I've actually voted in our local elections. And stakes are simply too high now for us all to value education and, not to value education experience improving dedication. Our kids have growing and glowing futures and LISD needs and deserves conservative, relevant leadership and experience. And I would appreciate your vote for Catherine Sells on May fourth. Thank you.
Mr. Collier?
Thank you so much for having us again. I just appreciate it so much. I, I've been really honored and proud to serve in this district. You know, it's, it's something else to demean some of those years and some of the service that I've put into this district. Look, my age is a factor, but the experience, the opportunities that I've had to lead this district, the age doesn't matter. Yeah, I can't double my age. Next year, I'm still going to be twenty-seven. I'll turn twenty-seven this year. The year after that, I'm going to be twenty-eight. You know, I am a young person, but my leadership is top caliber. I mean, I, what I can bring to the district is huge. And I don't say that from an angle of conceitedness, but I know the impact that I've made in my students and I know the impact that I can make from this seat up here and that's what I want to do. I don't, if you'll notice, everybody on the board, like, they kind of had similar ideas between my three, the three board members that were up here. They have similar ideas. And mine are unique. My voice is different. My connection to the community is different. And one of the reasons why I chose my opponent is because of that and I know that for a fact. So, I don't take this lightly. I take it very serious. Although I don't have the same experience that Catherine has, it's a very big opportunity and I'm very, very open to continue to learn and be developed by the people in this community so that I can better provide my servitude to the district. So, if you will please vote for me on May fourth. My name is Jake Collier and I'm running for the Police Board position on the Louisville ISD Board of Trustees.
Thank you. Can we give these candidates a hand? We have a few thank yous to the administration for allowing us to use their facility and technical support for being here to manage the mics and presentation and for recording the forum. And we'll get that posted as soon as possible. Thanks to Jackie Hernandez, the LHS senior who is taking photographs tonight that we'll also be posting on our website and social media. Foster Young, scout and eighth grader at McCamey Middle School for keeping time. Great job. Vernell Gregg for sharing your wisdom and perspective. The candidates for seeking this volunteer role and for being here tonight. And of course, to those of you here in our audience or watching at home so that you can make an informed decision. Our council online presence is listed here on the slide. Our Voter Resource Guide on our website and social media has information about the candidates, including biographical and contact information and links to local media articles and questionnaires. And video and photos from tonight's forum will be posted as soon as possible. Your next step is to go vote. Election Day is May fourth with early voting taking place April twenty-second through the thirtieth. For details about times and locations, visit votedenton.com. Thank you, and I'll turn it over to Michelle for a moment.
I was just going to let everyone thank you for coming out tonight to hear from our Board of Trustees, candidates. Simon Sinek once said that leadership is not about the next election, it's about the next generation. So, thank you for putting yourselves out there and everyone have a safe trip home tonight.